All right, welcome everybody. We're going to start a couple of minutes early since we're all here. And would you all please stand and honor our flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to take our opportunity to welcome our new trustees to the board. Mr. Lewis, Mr. Hendrix, welcome. Bill Turley is out. He had a needed replacement, so he sends his regrets, but he'll be up and mobile next month, so we'll eagerly wait his presence here on the board. And I'd like to welcome a former chairman of the trustees, Dr. Morris Reeves in the office. Welcome, sir. So with that, I'd like to read our mission statement. Dodge City Community College provides a student-centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. We always afford opportunity for remarks from the audience. If anybody would like to address the trustees, they can do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll move to the approval of minutes, and I will accept a motion when ready.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Completion of agendas. You see there's been some additions. Things are always moving around here, so with that, you always look. And so I withstand approval of the agendas as presented in revision number two. It should be on your desk or on your table.
Motion.
I'd like to take items under B Personnel under the consent agenda. Items one, six, and seven for discussion.
Okay, you would take items what?
One, six, and seven.
Off out of personnel?
Yes.
One, six, and seven.
Seven.
And seven. And like to move those into action items, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent, the agendas as revised?
Remove.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to reports of the trustees. So Dan, you have?
I don't have anything to report.
Kathy?
I went to the basketball games last night, and what an uproaring fun time that was, and watched the kids get involved and hollering and yelling. The other thing is, I have to applaud the relationship building that we are doing with the community, the high school through our workforce, through our student services on enrollment and getting kids interested in the high school. When I have a granddaughter and I pick her up from the high school and she starts telling me about all the opportunities afforded to them as high school students of Dodge City or of Buckland or other places, that they can come to our college and what all they can do, Grandma, and I'm thinking, hmm, I wish I knew all about that. And I did know about it, but I'm so excited that it's the words out there now about the relationship building that we're doing. So congratulations to all of you that are working so hard on that.
Kind of same, on the same line, I had a nice discussion with Superintendent Fred Dirksen, and you know, I've known him since he was at Jetmore through the years, and he has been really excited about the involvement with the community college and the high school and all the things that had have been done, all the things we can do down the road in the future. So it's exciting and education to see we're going to tie a lot of those things together and continue some of the programs that are there and expand and enrich some of the others. I will say, if Bill was a true former athlete like he was when he was with the Red Team, he would have been here on that. I'm going to bat down for him. We'll make sure we get that.
He's not here, so he's fair game.
Yes, that's right.
And Vitski will build a road going from the college to the high school.
Jim?
Well, being my first meeting, it seemed like I've been on it a little bit longer. We took a trip last Thursday up to see Washburn Tech, and what a neat experience that was. We went with, I'm going to have a hard time, Doctor Tetro. It's hard to me to use the exact terminology sometimes, but he was, you know, he showed us around the campus where he spent his last five years at and seeing the kids, the interaction with the staff, and also the opportunities that might come to Dodge City was very, very exciting. So again, thank you for the tour. It was very eye-opening.
I don't have a report, Gary. Mr. Chairman, pardon me.
No, you tell me whatever.
Birthday boy.
Come on. You know, kind of touching upon what Kelly and Jim said, you know, and then reading, you know, our reports that we had, and I'm really happy and excited to see all the action that we're getting out of our neighboring schools all around. And that's something that this college has to do and with work with this community as well. I think everybody on this board, that is what their focus is. And so this will be a good year for us because we've got a great strategic plan. I'm very excited about what we're doing now, and we're going to carry this energy and focus and passion into the future. So with that, Dr. Nolte?
Just to get you up to date on some things we've been doing, there's a lot of great things going on, but just for example, this morning, we had a really good meeting, I think it was Glennon and I. You couldn't be there for that, Dr. Tetro, but it was on childcare. There's a real need in this community, and I talked to the chamber today. I had lunch with the board meeting for the chamber, and we talked about that, and Anna has already sent me out some information on that. There's a real need in this community. Luckily, we've been able to, it's kind of embarrassing a little bit, we were paying our childcare workers at the school about $7.50. Now we're paying them about $1,250, which is still not where they need to be, but unfortunately in this old world, you know, we don't take care of our children at that age and then sometimes our older adults. So I think it's very important for us to get involved in that. I know we're doing some really, really good things in workforce, and Clayton and others are doing some really good jobs on that, but I think childcare is something that we need to be looking at very closely. And you know, that will help grow this community if we do it, if we do it the right way, because, you know, a lot of people may not come here because of, because of lack of childcare. And so those are important things, but other than that, everything else is going really, really well. It's a good semester, we've got a great group of kids and students, excuse me, and life is great.
All right.
Well, I would like to say, to make a comment, Dr. Nolte, on what you said, I also think our community is beginning to address our housing issues because people can't move here if they can't find decent housing, and our construction, technical construction students in that technical area have been doing a wonderful job working with the housing people here in Dodge, and I'm very proud of our college for that.
Okay, now we will welcome the Student Government Association. So Ms. Graham?
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, President Nolte, and Board of Trustees members. It's my privilege to stand before you, and I would like to begin by thanking you for your time and apologize for the confusion for the December board meeting. I would like to begin by, with the following club reports. SNA, the Student Nursing Association Club, had their first, had their Christmas luncheon and last meeting of the semester. They drew for spring scholarships that day as well. Their next meeting will be January 17th after they return from the Christmas break, which has already passed, but, and will begin their planning their spring grapple fundraiser, as well as their volunteering clinical experience at KMOM on February 7th and 8th. KMOM is the Kansas Mission of Mercy, provided by the Kansas Dental Charitable Foundation, which provides free dental care on those two days. They are still looking for volunteers as well, if anyone is interested. For the month of December, SGA did the following events. Hosted massages for students during finals weeks. Co-hosted the library finals event that included the following: meditation and yoga, hot cocoa and cookies, free Jimmy John sandwiches, and we've also hosted a blood drive on December 4th and collected 25 units of blood. We had a Christmas card drive for students to send back home to their families as well. We're in the process of planning the following events for the month of January. We first are beginning preparation for homecoming, which I probably saw them making posters for the homecoming court in the dining hall. We're doing bingo on Sunday and minute-to-win eight games as well. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you again next month.
Okay, next up on our other reports, does any department have anything to report? You had the reports, gentlemen mailed out to you, so if you have any questions on those or for you or Clayton have any additions to your reports that you'd like to touch on?
I'll piggyback on what Dr. Nolte mentioned about the childcare committee. They have tentatively scheduled a, I guess you might say a seminar on May the 12th for prospective individuals in the community that might be interested in becoming a childcare provider. They thought that this might help alleviate some of the childcare crisis in the community. So they're going to have a seminar held on that night. I think it's going to be from like 6:15 to 8:15. We'll host it here on the college, and people from the community can come and learn about how to become a childcare provider.
How's that information going to get out? What are we doing to get that information? What places will we have that?
That would be on social media. I think Molly down at the economic development is going to be coordinating the public information.
Can you give your packet as part of the report? I promise this is better info, this Excel and CTE document. We hosted a principal's council meeting on January 16th, where this was at the time at 11 of 14 students who attended, and made available to them our Senate Bill 155, Excel and CTE program page for the coming year. Excited for this. We'll have more of an opportunity to talk about this, I think, at the board retreat, but amazing response. I had the ability to visit with high school counselors at Dodge City High School, as well as went and visited with all of their sophomores, 189, very attentive, very well-respected and very well respectable, as well as their juniors, 461 juniors. So we're definitely getting the word out and looking forward to building all the details and logistics to get these programs started for the fall.
We have the fourth largest high school in the state. We need to be working with them very closely. That's our mission.
And their reception of me has been phenomenal.
All right, anything up? Beth?
I've got a couple of things to share with the board tonight. Thank you, Chairman Harshberger. First of all, I wanted to talk about our TRIO Student Support Services grant that was submitted, and this targets our first-generation college students. At this time, I'd like to, it's my great honor to introduce Dr. Gregory Roberts, and he's just going to come up to the microphone for a minute and talk about the grant that was submitted, and there wasn't just one grant, there were actually three that went in. And I want to just take a minute to brag up Dr. Roberts. I don't mean to embarrass him, but over the winter break, while many of us were home wrapping presents or something like that, he came out here every single day of his own accord and worked on two additional grants and got them submitted, and it was just a tremendous effort that I think is really going to serve our students well. So he's just going to briefly tell you about the three grants that were submitted and what we expect on that. And again, these are the TRIO Student Support Services and Dr. Gregory Roberts.
Thank you for that warm welcome and introduction to the counter here. I want to say good evening to the Board of Trustee members. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about TRIO Student Support Services. But before I go ahead on and get started with that, a little bit about myself, I'm Gregory Roberts. I have my PhD in sustainability education from Prescott College in Prescott, Arizona. And to go ahead on and start with my presentation, I want to cover three things for you today. I want to give you a little brief history of the TRIO programs, but I'd also like to tell you about our success. And you have that information right there, and your performance report that we just completed for 2018-19. I should say Melanie completed. And then I want to give you our goals for the future here in the form of the grant writing. So a little brief history, and under the administration of Lyndon Vane Johnson, he had this slogan, if you recall, "War on Poverty." And therefore, in 1964, he said, "Well, let me try this experimental program to see if we can address social and cultural issues that are a challenge for low-income students, first-generation college students, and students with disabilities for trying to pursue college education." So with that in mind, the first program in 1964 was the TRIO, what we call Upper Bound. Serves sixth graders through 12th graders in college readiness activities, such things as composition, literature, science, foreign language. And then in 1965, Talent Search was developed, and Talent Search similarly worked with the sixth graders through 12th graders and also allowing them to start thinking about college, because usually at that age group, they're still trying to decide what they want to do with their life. And then in 1967, 68 or so, a program developed by the name of Special Services for Disadvantaged Students came on board. And so these three programs together made what we call TRIO programs. These programs again serve low-income and first-generation college students. Now, the Dodge City Community College program, we provide many different services to our low-income and first-generation student populations. Things like tutoring, academic advising, planning out your course schedule, assisting you with the college experience by taking you up on campus visits done by my colleague Melanie over here, to give students trips up to four-year institutions. We want those low-income students and first-generation college students to believe that the college experience is for them. With that in mind, we are in the last year of a five-year grant cycle, 2015 to 2020. Our grant cycle ends August 31st. However, the new grant application period will be for 2020 to 2025. I'm happy to announce, as my supervisor has said, we completed our application a week before the deadline, and the deadline for that was like June, I should say January 27th, and we went ahead on and got that done last week. Not only did we decide as an institution to go ahead on and complete the traditional, what we call regular, TRIO Student Support Services grant, we decided to also go after English as a second language, since this is a Hispanic-serving institution, and we also think we should give the STEM grant a shot as well. So that's a little bit about our history there. I have shared with you the annual performance report that I'm also proud of, so let me take you over, your page number probably says 16, but we'll just go ahead on the college page two. And page two kind of gives you a highlight of what these grants are looking for in the TRIO community. They're looking at persistence. We said that we would have a persistent rate of 60% of our low-income and first-generation college students. As you can see, our actual number was a 73% for working with low-income and first-generation college students. We also said that we would assist low-income and first-generation college students with having excellent GPAs, and we said we would do that at about 80%. As you can see, our actual rate was 93%. We said we again would take these low-income students and graduate them at a 33% rate, and as you can see, they receive their associate degrees at a 63% rate. And then we said we would take the same low-income and first-generation college students and not only graduate them, but also get them transferred to the four-year institution at 23% rate we were approved for, and as you see, we exceeded that as well. So the Dodge City Community College TRIO program are doing wonderful things for the low-income, first-generation, and students with disabilities community, and thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to share this information with you. If you have any questions, I'm here to ask, answer, and respond.
Gregory, I think that, you know, your scores are great, you know, especially, you know, with your twice-year degree as expected. So going forward, you know, what do we expect? What are our goals? You're going to rewrite the grant?
So the grant has been rewritten, has been submitted. Of course, we believe that we will be funded because we also get some points as a continuation grant. So, and let me kind of give you that in a nutshell. The annual performance report that you have in front of you, of the five-year period, the middle three years, so year two, year three, and year four, when you complete all of your objectives successfully, you get an extra 15 points on your grant application for each, each of those three middle years. So for us, our application not only will be worth, 105 is what the grant application itself is worth, but we also get 15, 15, 15, so 45 more points added to the 105 for a total of 150 points. And then we are also, an ambitious institution, and so we're also going to complete the competitive preference priorities, which allows me to work with my colleague, Dr. Tetro, and working with business in the community with low-income and first-generation college students, and that was another five points. So the grant is going to be about 105, 155 points, right? We believe we will get those, 155 points. We will be a very competitive grant. Now, the two new grants, English as a second language, 105, and the five, we can only get 110. The STEM grant, we can only get 100 in STEM. But because we're also a Hispanic-serving institution, I also believe therefore that we will get the maximum points on those, and those grants are not in our community nor in our region, so I think we have a good shot at those two as well. Now, if you're saying of the students that we serve, 1,600 FTE students that we serve, I'm looking at if we can get 150 students that teach to those programs, that's about 25% of our students that will benefit from the TRIO Student Support Services program, and I like that idea myself.
So does that grant money, is it per student grant, or is it a total for the college?
Yeah, it's a total for the institution. Yes. And I probably didn't give you the numbers on that, that grant application is worth about $253,032, $32 somewhere in there. So over five years, of course, that's a million two plus of funds, times three grants, right? An extra three point million or so.
So they're all working around that, too?
Indeed, indeed.
So what about the STEM grant and the English as a second language? What are those grants? Those are five-year grant as well?
Those are five years as well at 253.
Same as?
Yes, all of them are the same amount that you could apply for.
So would this be the first time we've done the STEM and the English?
Yes, to my knowledge, it would be the first time that we've attempted this English as a second language and the Student Support Services that serves STEM students.
Very good.
Yes. Thank you.
I definitely applaud you for your efforts in the last five years, everybody, and you know, these results are great, and it's set the stage for us here in the future, and then especially, you know, going after these additional grants. This is what we all need to be doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. He and Melanie are a great team, you guys. I just want you to be aware.
Yes, they are.
They work well together.
She's the one that got these.
Melanie, would you please stand? Thank you. Okay, Beth, anything else?
Okay, I just wanted to mention that I gave out some preliminary general Pell Grant information at the board work session, and I'll share also that with those that were not able to attend the board work session. And at the work session, I was asked if I could provide more specific information on the way that Pell Grants are calculated. In other words, at what income level Pell Grants are calculated. So I wanted to tell everybody we're going to do that. Later, you have an approval for an interim financial aid director, and upon your approval, that person will be here, and I'm going to have them calculate where it is this year and then where it will be next year, because it'll be just a little bit. And so then we will provide that for all of you at the next board work session or the next board meeting, whichever the chair determines and President Nolte. So we will be providing that. Thank you. That's all I had.
Right. Jim brought up the fact that we went to Washburn Tech the other day, and in doing so, we were traveling with another individual with one of the high schools. And Jim, you posed a question to them about how many people at the high schools understand the Pell Grant program, and indicated that it wasn't very many. So that is the challenge for us, or the task for us, is to make sure that we're working with those schools and educating, because it was also brought up that it's a fairly complicated application. So that's the thing, we need to work with our neighboring schools and make sure that they're well-versed in understanding and how to apply for the Pell Grants.
I agree, and I think we'll be talking to you in some future board meetings about some specific initiatives that are targeting that.
Okay.
That we think will be successful. And we're trying to partner and listen very closely to the high school personnel and meet with them on a regular basis, minimum weekly, sometimes more, and we're working out those partnerships so we can share that information. And we want to get personnel here who understand the system over there and personnel there that understand the FAFSA process here. And we're going to do things like attend parent teacher, senior parent teacher conferences, because you really need to help the parents, and so that's kind of what we're targeting.
Is there a deadline to apply for those things, these Pell Grants?
Not, well, the confusion comes with the summer, whether you apply, which year, which term you're going to go, but generally, there's not a deadline. You can go ahead and apply once it's opened, and then it closes at the end of the year. Like right now, you can, you can apply. We have students that are submitting FAFSA's right now, and we're getting ready to open the following year. We have our new system, and so we just opened that up, and we're trying to interface our Power Fades Financial Aid System with our new system. Soon as we do that, we'll be opening them up and notifying students that their FAFSA has been received, and I anticipate that'll start as soon as next week. We got a call from a young man today that was from Beniola High School, and he had just sat down last night and finished it. I mean, he's on, on the ball, and so we, he's going to be, if I have anything to do with it, he's going to be the first one notified that we've received, so.
What exactly is a FAFSA?
A free application for federal student aid is what it stands for, and it ties in with a family's income tax returns. It's not as complicated as it used to be, because once you put in your information, it populates from the parent's tax return into some of the field, so they don't have to fill them out, and that saves a lot of time. Several months ago, the board approved a system called IVEs for IRS transcripts. In the old days, we had, I don't know if any of you remember that, but in the old days, we would have to wait and send off, and the parents would have to get a copy of their tax return and provide it for us. Now we can electronically request that tax transcript, and usually we can get it within two days, and so that's going to speed things up electronically. You know, it's like night and day on the speed. You know, it's like night and day on the speed of awarding and packaging financial aid and getting it out there. So what we're working on right now is interfacing everything with our new system. So I'm excited about that.
The more people know about FAFSA, the better off they are.
Yeah.
It really is. Everybody should fill it out. Every high school student, everybody should fill it out, adults or whatever, because it's basically free money if you're approved for it.
So, Beth, the, when you, what's the term, FAFSA?
It's FAFSA, F-A-F-S-A.
Oh. So when you apply, is that just for the Pell Grant, or is that what shows the other grants that might be?
No, that shows eligibility for Pell Grant. There's another one that's a supplemental called S-C-O-G that some students may also qualify. It shows their eligibility for federal work study also, and then it determines their loan eligibility and what type of loan.
Even banks require it, don't they?
Pardon me?
Don't banks, even banks want a FAFSA?
Yes.
FAFSA.
Yes. And so if a parent would get into a situation wanting to get a private loan, for example, a lot of times, they need to show that they are not eligible for a full Pell Grant or a full loan, or only a partial loan, and then the bank can go ahead and provide a private loan, so.
But not to confuse people, on a Pell Grant, there's no loan.
A Pell Grant, they never have to pay back. It has nothing to do with a loan. It's a full grant.
So if a young man is a senior in high school, or a young lady filled out the paperwork, did what they need to do online or through us, and gets notified that he or she qualifies for the following semester or fall semester, or he's got a year to do things?
Absolutely. Because it covers both semesters, and then they're notified in their award package how much they're eligible for. Like, they might be eligible for a full Pell, or sometimes we have students that are eligible for like a three-fourths Pell or a half Pell. And over the years, and we'll try to report this next month, because I think it's kind of fascinating, the, it hasn't kept up. In other words, the income level changes, and then the Pell amount drops a little bit. And there's some bills that they're looking at now to adjust some of that. And so I'm hopeful that we find out here pretty shortly if that passes, so.
There are year-round Pels, too, right?
Pardon me?
Are there year-round Pels also?
Yes, now they have year-round Pels, and that was all confusing when they went to summer Pels and things like that. It was really problematical for our athletes, who sometimes come in in June or July to prepare. That was very problematical.
What about young adults who are out on their own and are dependent on their parents' income?
Are not dependent on their, yes, they can apply. They're considered independent, and they can apply just like.
They still know income tax?
Yes.
If their parents don't claim them.
If their parents don't claim them, and they are already determined to be independent.
And does that apply to the nursing program here, too?
Uh-huh. Absolutely. Yeah.
The thing is, they have to have a graduate, either a GED or a high school graduate, to qualify for a Pell Grant, correct?
Yes, yes. And there is some discussion going on now at the federal level about possibly changing that, so. And we haven't seen that for a long time. So it'll be interesting to see if they would maybe start with seniors in high school that were on a pathway that would lead to a certificate, which is into Dr. Tetro's area. And so I would suspect that he's following that with avid interest. And we don't know. We don't know what they'll come up with. They may just pilot it in certain areas or something like that. They did a little pilot several years ago. So lots happening at the Department of Ed with federal financial aid, and we have to constantly monitor it and keep up with it.
I think two things, and one of the things you brought up, about you wanted to be the first one to contact that kid in Mineola. Once a Pell Grant application, whether we initiate it or help the parents do it, they can use that money at any school they want to go to, so.
Right.
So I think from a marketing standpoint, if we can get kids in there, have somebody bilingual when they go to the high school, make every, because a lot of the parents, you know, they don't understand, kids translate, kids don't take their time in translating, and so as long as they really understand that. But I like the standpoint you said, I want to be the first one to call him. There's a lot of area community colleges around here that he could use that grant at. So if we market ourselves and say, look, we helped you get this, we want to show you, we'll get you on a path to a career that you want to do, I think that's just a great way to look at it.
Pell Grant experts.
The other thing is that in high school, is it SB 155? Now, we've gone as far as now, everything is, their tuition and fees will be, in the fall, will be free. The only thing they'll have to pay, right?
Tuition. Tuition. Fees is free. There will be no per-credit hour fees. They will have to pay for books. They will have to pay for personal protective equipment, testing fees, licensing fees, certification fees. We are going to put students in uniform. They will have uniforms. So there will be some fees involved, but of the twelve programs that we're looking at for the fall, no program for high school students will have a per-semester charge of more than five hundred dollars. So if you think about that through two years, you can get your certificate for two thousand dollars or less, all in.
That's excellent.
And then we've done Senior Day, right? Andrew, we've done Senior Day, and everybody that came gave them a five-hundred-dollar scholarship.
There were about seventy-seven students that we gave scholarships to, and I do know that those individuals that graduated in December have used them, because they are now full-time students at Dodge City Community College.
And then we're going, we, Manufacturer Day, we did the same thing?
Yes. I think we limited those scholarships to ten or fifteen, maybe? It wasn't everyone, no. And then in two weeks, we'll have Junior Day on our campus, so we have about a hundred and eighty juniors that will be on campus that will visit with faculty, staff, our resources. We are not going to offer them a scholarship. That's going to come when we put in Senior Day for next year. So we're going to go ahead and put in a Save the Day card for Senior Day. And I've already been given permission that we can offer those that attend a scholarship again.
Then we also have Ag Day, right?
You've got Ag Day and Construction Day coming up.
They've already asked for scholarships, too, about?
Right. Constructive Day is?
March.
March fifth. Ag Day, I think, is February twenty-seventh. I just learned that today.
Oh, okay.
The really cool thing, and I mean this sincerely, the community in economic development and all the business and industry that are helping us put on those days are looking to us for lunch and comments and tours, and then they are going to put the students out into the community touring construction sites, construction businesses, ag corporations as well. They're going to do an Ag Mechanic Day, and then we'll have more of an Ag Production Day as well. So economic development is spearheading the Ag Day and the Construction Day, but we have been asked to participate and volunteer in this, just as you are as well. So that's what we do. That's why we're here. So, you bet.
I just think the more we get out there and help those students out, the better I'm going to be.
So yourself.
That's right.
No, that's, that's, this is excellent stuff. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. We're back to my double-triple revised agenda. Make sure, I almost went to the other one. Ooh, bad deal. Okay. Any other, any other items that you, anybody would want to bring up in their department reports? Thank you. Excellent job, everybody. Thank you. So we'll move on to item six, Board Action Items. Item A, Board Policy 205, refer to your board book. This is a second reading. The new trustees haven't really had a chance to weigh in on the first reading, but we sent it back to have some revisions. The first, the one to be revised is behind the second page in this, so what we do is we take a look at it, revise it, and when they have a second reading, then I look for a motion to approve or not. So we'll end this, meet smart satisfaction.
And that might be worth saying again, the policy of the board is that there's a two reading process for amending the policy or creating a new policy. So we have a first reading tonight. This is on, actually, for a second reading. And I think in the information you received, the old policy is right behind the proposed policy.
Yes. So I would ask for a motion to approve Policy 205 as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Need further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, item B. Okay, the Development of the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, scope of work. So Joseph Baumann, he's not here yet, so.
He's, he's envious, he'll be here first thing in the room.
Okay, all right. So he just flew in from California, and he's in, he texted.
I just, you know, Joe was the one that did our strategic plan and did a very, very good job and worked with all of us. I know that, I know, Jim, that you were concerned about or interested in our enrollment and our enrollment plan, as well as mine and others. And so my thing is, we're going to, we're going to really drill down and look at what we're doing, how we can make it better. And part of it is, is, you know, now that we have a good, now that we have our system up and with our IT system, this is now in good shape, I think, we're going to start working on our strategic, our strategic enrollment plan. So these are just the kind of things, these are the things you just kind of roll out. And so this is the next step.
Is there a guestimate on how long? I know it says number of monthly meetings unknown, but is there any kind of guess how long this might take?
It shouldn't take very, it'll take about probably as long as the strategic plan did, which was about two months, wasn't it? How long was the strategic plan, wasn't it?
I was going to ask when we think, when we expect this work to be done?
As quickly as possible.
It seems pretty open-ended financially.
Yeah. I think, I think it should be done within the next three months, at least. I don't think it's going to take that long. I think he will, he will get with the board also, visit with y'all, as well as, as well as faculty and staff and students. And so I think he moves pretty quickly, so he's got a lot of research on strategic enrollment, and he's looked at other schools and how they're doing. And that's, we've got to get this, we've got to get, we've got to grow, and that's what we're all about.
He's pretty no-nonsense. Let's give it that.
Yeah. It's hard to make him smile.
Paul had the opportunity to review his scope of work as presented, and noticed he did a lot of discounting of his fees, which is good, and I think that's due to relationships, so that's good. And he will be here for Jim and Kelly, he'll be for meetings this weekend.
Okay.
So, okay. Do we have any other questions on this?
No, I move to approve.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to a Title V Grant Writer. So, Dr. Tetro?
In December, approximately the second week of December, Dr. Boroday sent me notification that there was a new Title V Grant application available, an award application was available. My first response was, I did not think we were qualified for that grant application because we have an existing Title V Grant, and we're actually in year five of that grant. Dr. Boroday did some work with our current grant consultant for that existing Title V Grant and found out that it is a separate competition with separate competitive preference priority points, and as such, we have the ability to apply for a second grant. When we looked at the grant, Jane and I together, it absolutely fits exactly what we're trying to do in technical education and workforce development. The competitive preference priority points are geared two different ways. One are for technical education pathways. So when we talked about all the work that we're doing in our high schools and the Senate bill funding and the development of new pathways, that leads right into the grant. And the second piece is a focus on professional skills and financial literacy. What many of you will find out about me is I'm all about workplace skills. Let's get kids to come to class or come to work on time, every day, on time, drug-free, every day, on time, in uniform, leave your cell phone alone, we can get them a job. With that in mind, this grant was a huge fit into that. Prior to the break, I made a phone call to an individual that I have known for almost, almost twenty-five years, who has written several grants with me and I've worked with directly, most recently at Washburn Tech. Jillian Gableman, Dr. Jillian Gableman, has been a longtime Western Kins and was at Barton County Community College for a long time, is their Vice President for Academic Affairs. She has worked with EduKins. She was the Associate Dean at Washburn Tech before she retired to become Washburn Tech's Grant Writer. When we had the ability to go up to Washburn to give the tour, in terms of the benchmarking tour of Washburn Tech, we were standing in the simulation lab, talking about the work that we'd done with a TACT grant, which is Trade Adjustment Assistance Grant. Jillian wrote that grant for Washburn and Washburn Tech. It was a twelve-million-dollar grant with four different partners. Prior to that, she was a round-one recipient, Washburn Tech was a round-one recipient, of a grant called Track Seven. Some of you know that Dodge City Community College participated in that Track Seven grant. Jillian wrote that grant to the tune of nineteen-point-one million dollars. She is modestly prolific in terms of her grant writing, and she and I mutton-jef this pretty well. She has her role and I have my role. So we have had, we have had an opportunity to work together for a grant competition that was due February tenth of this year. They have since delayed the deadline two weeks. It is now due February twenty-fourth. We were and are and will be ready for February tenth. I'm not sure that I'm excited about giving the rest of the world two weeks to catch up, but we're going to have a grant that's going to be ready, two-point-eight million dollars over five years, roughly five-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-and-sixty, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year, depending on the year. We target five programs. We target diesel, welding, computer science, climate and energy control, and electrical technology. Climate and energy control and electrical technology would be two brand-new programs. We are connected and we will be connected with a group called NC Three, that is the National Coalition of Certification Centers. I think the grant that we're working on has a huge hook, because everything we're doing surrounds national certification. We had the opportunity to sit in on the webinar for the grant, modestly and selfishly. I think we're heads and tails above other questions that were asked in terms of that seminar. I'm going to be truly ticked if we don't get this grant. You have an application or an agenda item in front of you for her services. She is well aware that it has to go through board approval. If for some reason it doesn't get approved tonight, I owe her big time, and I'll figure that out, how to do that. But we're ready, and this is going to be great if we get this. What it would mean is that my salary would be offset twenty percent as a result of the grant, so the grant would pay for twenty percent of my salary. We would have a full-time curriculum director that would also serve, tech ed curriculum director, that would also serve as the activity director for the grant. We would have a full-time work ethic development instructor that We would have a full-time work ethic development instructor that would work with these kids and students about financial literacy and work ethic and employability skills and professional skills. We would have a full-time admin support person. And we would use the grant to offset 25% of the brand-new tech ed advisor position that we're gonna be bringing in front of the board probably in April or May. So the positions in the grant, there'd be three full-time positions plus 25% of the tech ed advisor, plus 20% of my grant, or my salary. The way it would work is that the grant would have a diminishing payment of salary. The college would, as part of its sustainability plan, would start to pick up those salaries as you go through the grant. So year one, everything's paid for by the grant. Year two, 80% is paid for by the grant, 60%, 40%, 20%. These are all positions that we desperately need at the college anyway. These are programs that we wanna put forward anyway. If we get the grant, it means a million dollars of personnel that we didn't have. It means a million dollars of equipment that we didn't have. So I'm probably as excited about this one as I've been for a while. I think it fits right into what we're trying to do anyway. And as I shared with the two trustees on our trip, we're gonna do the grant whether it's funded or not. It's just a matter of whether or not there's $2.8 million that comes with all the activities that we're planning for anyway.
Well, the, all the new folks help with recruiting, is that gonna be part of their job also?
So with Dr. Nolte's grace, we have actually added a technical education recruiter position. It is open right now. It's being advertised right now. We have two applications. I am hopeful that we can do interviews next week and hopeful that we can get somebody hired pending board approval in February. As we talk about getting out to the schools, and I appreciate all the comments about getting us out to the schools, right now, there's only one of me. And so if we could double our tech ed staff, that would be amazing. And we would do that with a tech ed recruiter. So that won't be a part of the grant, but we're excited for that recruiting possibility.
May I add? It was, it wasn't added, it's actually a previous position we already had. And we had funds set aside in the budget for an admissions rep in the student affairs office, and we just reallocated that over to town. It wasn't added funds, just so you know.
Yeah, I know we haven't had one for a while, just hoping that as we go towards getting one, that this person is really high-powered, dynamic person that can really talk to high school kids.
We're extremely hopeful. Kristi used to be that person.
Start here in 2015?
With the, I'm sorry, Jim, with the anticipated growth model that we've heard tonight, with the Pell, with the other financial, with all of that, it's nothing but just marrying everything together for that. So I see with that growth model, even though it goes back 80%, 60%, our enrollment should increase enough and grow that we'll be able to sustain all of that.
Without a doubt. Even, even with just the high school piece in and by itself, Carla put out news from K-World today that the Senate Bill funding allocation for the fall semester came out across the board for all of the 26 institutions, the 19 plus seven technical colleges. Our funding allocation for this fall for Senate Bill funding was $206,000. Glennon and I have a running joke that I believe conservatively, next year, we'll have well over a million dollars. So just in, just in that piece alone, it would take care of the entire grant.
You've been missing a large portion.
It, it's very low-hanging fruit. I mean, I'm, I'm good, but I don't even have to be that good to pick up what we're getting picked at.
Well, as we discussed yesterday in our work session, if you want the best, you get somebody that's done it over and over and is successful. So I, I support this.
Forgot one important thing is the name of your grant.
Oh, that is true. So Jillian is a firm believer that you need to brand into the reader's head a creative acronym or grant. So the first one that she wrote for Trade Adjustment Assistance was Track 7, and Track stood for something. Then we had Ken Train, Kansas Train. The working title that we're using right now is ACDC Kansas, Achieving Credentials in Dodge City. So if that doesn't stick into the reader's mind, I'm not sure what will.
Brown music with that.
See a motion?
I, I need a motion to approve.
Still moved, okay, approve this Title V Grant Writer.
All right, thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item B, eSports Equipment and Technology Bid. Dr. Forgy?
Video games, technology and games events, significantly since I played pong in my car. I remember I used to tell my son, when he played on Super Mario Brothers, you never make a career out of that, you need to get in there and study. But now students are making millions of dollars in competitive eSports. And several months ago, there was interest in creating a eSports program on campus. This is growing phenomenally among colleges, universities, and several institutions are creating not only club teams, but partially competitive teams. The college here just decided to do a club team. But in order for them to be competitive and have competitive teams against other colleges, we felt the need for adequate equipment. And so we decided to purchase equipment for this club team. It's a minimal investment that we think will help enrollment and retention of students. But, and it's something that's gonna keep their interest. You can go down to the Concoral on a daily basis and see several students toddles around the TV down there, they've got their console hooked up to it. But we wanted to have them to have similar equipment. And so we purchased, purchasing six bundles here. One of the things that I requested when we, when we went out on bid for this, is that the equipment can be used for other things as well. And so simulation and graphic design is popular, and so we wanted to make sure that the equipment could also do that. This is something that Jay Goldie from our faculty member is going to be sponsoring. I think it's a very worthwhile investment for minimal now.
I know everybody laughed when you talked about kids not making their money and that. I just purchased a new 3D x-ray in my office, had to upgrade all my software, and I had to have video cards put in there. And my IT guy was going, we gotta get these video cards doing that. And he goes, don't laugh. He goes, these were developed for this system, were developed by gamers because they were improving their gaming capabilities on the computers. And so it's taken over to the medical field as well. So a lot of x-ray technology and video imaging has come from that, that genre.
Are we gonna have drone games too eventually, where they have those drones that go through things?
One of the things that was discussed was setting large screen TVs up in the theater where students could come in and watch the students as they compete against other colleges and other teams.
Charged admission.
I told you at our last work session, whether this comes under athletics or not, but I mean, I see having a competition with, coming to Dodge City and doing it, because they're, they're building new stadiums just to handle getting in.
And, and I agree with you. And Dr. Forgy and I actually talked through this, the NJCA is actually in the process of making eSports a certified activity within the NJCA. For now, I recommend it to be stayed on the club side because there's some very big questions about the amateurism of the world. Yeah. Because, because there is a lot of prize money in it. And the NJCA is struggling right now to figure out if they're going to fit under the amateurism laws that we currently have. And so that's why I recommend it at this time to stay. Until I feel like the NJCA has a better idea of how they're going to handle that than we stay as a club sport because I don't wanna put us in danger of being in trouble with the NJCA because of that piece. But I think that's something that could come down the road very easily, could come down the road and fall under, fall under the realm of athletics.
All right. Have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now we'll move into item F, which should be in your handout.
As was discussed a little bit, first of all, thank you Chairman Harshberger for recognizing this. One of the things that we've been looking at in the realm of athletics is our strength and conditioning piece as well as the mental training of our student athletes. And one of the things that we've seen on the strength and conditioning, as I mentioned in our work session on Monday, is there are a lot of studies that are going to the fact that strength and conditioning people are essential in the safety of our student athletes. And so that was something that I've, I've been looking at for a period of time. And this gentleman was brought to my attention, and so I looked into, met with him, had him meet with our staff, which he did on his own accord, which I really appreciate. But he has some very interesting ideas that are not, not necessarily the same as a lot of the strength and conditioning coaches out there. And so he's, he's very unique. At this point, we don't feel that we have the resources to justify hiring a full-time strength and conditioning coach. As much as we see the importance of it, we don't feel like we have the resources to do that at this point. Hopefully down the road, we, we will be able to explore that. But Marcus Santis has been a, has, has an interesting background. He's worked with a number of high school athletic programs. He's also worked with the University of Memphis and Mike Norvell with these football program. Helped Coach Norvell elevate that program and what they're doing. And now Coach Norvell has moved on to Florida State. And Marcus is looking for another challenge, I think would be a good way to put it. And we had an opportunity, he has worked with Chairman Harshberger's son before, and we had an opportunity to talk to him and think that he would be a good fit to be able to help our athletic department. So we talked to him about a consulting basis. And what we came up with was working with, with Dr. Nolte and talking to, talking to Marcus was we would like to do a five-month consulting situation, which would be February, March, April, and then off May, June, and then July and August as well, at $5,000 a month for the consulting fee. So that would be the, that would be the financial consideration all total over the five months would be a total of $25,000. I, I think it's a good fit for us. I think it can help our athletic department in multiple ways. As I mentioned before, he does a lot of mental training as well. I'm going to have him actually work with our coaching staff on some positive coaching aspects as well. And so I think there's a lot of upside to, to what we're looking, what, what we would like him to do with our athletic department. So I'm respectfully requesting that you approve the consulting fee of $5,000 a month for five months for Marcus Santis.
Jacob, what, I mean, as far as consulting, is he gonna work, I mean, right now, I know we don't have a full-time strength and coach, and one of his basketball probably runs their own program and that, is he gonna be consulting those coaches as well?
Yes, he will. Because... In, in order, the main focus immediately is going to be with football and track. However, he will be a resource for every one of our coaches. He'll come in and, and work right off the bat with, with, like I said, the football and track, with football going into spring football and a lot of their development phase. Obviously, Marcus has some great background in track as well. If you look at some of the track teams he's worked with, it's very impressive in what he's done. And so that's gonna be the main focus right away. Obviously, he has to sit down and meet with our coaches and make sure that what he wants to do fits within the whole culture of what they want with their team as well. So there's gonna be some meetings right off the bat with our coaches to, to get things, to make sure that we're all on the same page and it's smooth. But he is going to be a resource for all of our coaches. Obviously, you know, as a consulting piece, is he gonna be able to work with every team every day? Probably not. But, but he can help our coaches build programs that they can run and sustain.
You might talk about Garden City?
Yeah. One of the studies that, that has come in when I say safety is an issue, one of the things that Garden City, as, as you know, a year and a half ago, Garden City had a football player that died basically on, I mean, didn't happen on the field, but basically that's what happened was he died as a result of a conditioning session that was run by the football coaches without any supervision of a strength and conditioning coach. And that's one of the recommendations that's coming from a lot of medical professionals is to separate that piece and leave any, any conditioning, testing, take things like that under a strength and conditioning coach who's not, their sole focus isn't, hey, we've gotta win a game. It's, it's the good of the student athletes and preparing them long-term. And so that's one of the big things that's come out of this deal with Garden is they've, they've really been chastised heavily for not having that position. And I just think this is a little bit, it's a first step in, in being proactive in that before, you know, before we have, God forbid, we'd ever have anything to that extent happen here. But even, even an injury or a heat-related sickness that would go to the level of going to hospital is, is a scary thing. And anything that we can do to prevent that is, is very important.
And he has worked with, you know, female athletes and strength and conditioning coaches with females, because there is a different way females need to lift in that.
Absolutely. He was actually a, correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Harshberger, he was actually a women's track coach for a, for a private high school in the Memphis area and did a very good job with them and took them from not being that good to being a top-three team in the state of Tennessee. Any other questions?
No questions. The thing I just really admire about him is his approach on the positive attitude. And, you know, my hope is that we bring this to all of our teams to develop that winning attitude and develop that within these new students and athletes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve. Figure faster, stronger.
Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now then, the item's moved out of consent to action is item one, the Title V Manager. Dan, you have some questions?
I'll find my notes here.
Think we have a number pages, but anyway.
We talked about it.
We talked about it.
It's in the plan.
It's in the plan. Oh, yeah, good.
In the plan.
Okay. That was talked about yesterday.
Monday. Seems like it. Three days ago.
Well, I'm just wondering now, is this person employed now with us?
Uh huh. Yeah.
It's just moved, it's additional responsibilities.
Yes, so under the grant, right now, we only have grant approval for a 75-25 position. So she'll spend 75% of her time and effort doing the Title V Grant, and then 25% she'll still be working in business services for us temporarily. The grant, like Dr. Tater talked about... The grant, like Dr. Tater talked about earlier, the current Title V grant that we have right now is up for renewal in September, I believe. We might have an extension. But once we renew that grant or reapply, then we'll go for 100% with that position.
That's not a question.
Okay.
That'd be extending your question on?
On that one, yes.
Okay, move to six.
Well, I'm curious on six, we have quite a list of people.
Yes. Probably do want to know the cost.
Yes.
Definitely.
Previous salaries and, you know.
I got this yesterday.
I've already got it.
Good, good. Yeah, so that was the question at the work session as well. So I didn't want to post the previous salaries of all these employees in the board packet, but they're all there. I calculated how much it's going to cost. It goes into effect from the federal government January 1st, so it is this paycheck essentially.
Okay. Well, it looks pretty minimal for most of those.
Yeah, and Glenn and I met, we went over all of the job descriptions, well, I had, we had all the job descriptions, went over all the duties of these positions. We kind of tried to see if there were some that we could move to another category, but we thought this is probably the best for the college.
Kristi, you want these back?
If, yeah, if you don't want them, I will take them back.
Want to gather them up ready?
You bet. You bet.
Okay, then item seven, academic.
I actually meant to take this one off. I apologize, Dr. Nolte, it was already in Carlos' packet when I gave it to her, the job description, so it's okay. We can talk about it anyways.
What is the present salary of Mr. Strel?
So this is actually not for Jorge.
It's not?
This would, this would report to Mr. Estrella?
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so this is, this would be an academic coach in the SARC, our Student Achievement and Resource Center. So it'll be a part-time academic coach in those subject areas, so tutor for our students in biology, life science, things like that, and then a part-time academic advisor. We do actually, we are going to change a little bit on the job description, so if you want me to re-present it maybe next month, we can do that as well. We haven't identified 100% who they'll be academic advising, how many students, those types of things, so, and Dr. Ward is not here this evening to answer to it, but...
And we're just doing applicants now, applications for this job, or have we hired?
No goodness, it's a new position, so I, per our board policy, I can't advertise until it's approved here. So no, I have not opened it for applicants yet.
Okay.
We've been looking for about two years for someone in the area of biology and math.
Yeah, we've really struggled to find an academic coach in the science area because most people with that background that are qualified are either working in the field or they're already qualified to be an adjunct or faculty member for us. So we were fortunate enough that our previous academic coach, he actually had a geology degree and social sciences, so he kind of was a jack of all trades, but we recently moved him into a full-time faculty position, and so now that position is kind of vacant. And so the funding for that position is what would fund this position.
Okay, and how much did we spend on that position? I mean, what will this cost us approximately?
So we haven't fully decided, we're still in discussion there. What is budgeted in the budget right now currently is around in the upper 30s.
Okay.
And it's part of our, part of what we're trying to do is retain, and we want to make sure we have good academic advising also. You know, we have great academic advising in our athletics with Abby, but we want to make, and so far, she hasn't gripped yet, has she, about new students? You know, she has, what, 350?
This spring, it's not quite that high. Probably too many, but I expect next fall, I guess it will.
She keeps her office with snacks, always candles, smells good. Kids go in there.
Always student habits.
Yeah. We put a nice couch in there.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to not only recruit but retain, and that's what, you know, what we're doing with all these different grants, we're trying to retain these students. Because it's a lot harder to recruit than it is to retain. Once you get them here, you want to keep them here. That's why scholarships are important, and that's why all the things we're doing to try to get them to stay here.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Well, and did anybody have any questions or opinions or added additions to that job description? Looks okay. Okay, wonderful.
For all you people that love math and science, I mean, you know, that's one of those things. Okay?
Me tutors.
All right. So that completes the Board of Action Agenda items. We have the unfinished business. So we'll move on to new business, the election of...
Do we need to okay those three?
Well, I was wondering if I was going to approve those now or just leave them at consent and approve them in the exam. You want to take action on them now? Let's go ahead and take action on item one, six, and seven. Okay. All right. Motion to approve items one, six, and seven?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those three are approved. Okay, we'll move on to board elections. Dr. Nolte?
My turn. Fantastic. I'd like to call for nominations for the chair.
I'd like to re-ala Gary Harshberger as our chairperson.
I'll second that.
Are there any other individuals? Board members? Trustee Harshberger is nominated for chairman. Are there any further nominations? Obviously, there's not. Trustees will make a motion to cease the nominations. Would y'all please?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any, a motion to, is there a motion to approve trustee Harshberger for chair?
I make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
On favor? You go, sir.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being willing to do it.
Well, I, no, it's an honor to serve for you, and thank you all for that. And like I said, I'm looking forward to a great, great year here. So we'll now move on to elections for vice chair. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Ramsar.
I'll second that.
So there's a second, Kathy Ramsar. Do I have another nomination?
No, I moved that we cease the nominations.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of nomination cease, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kathy's approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you. I don't know if I can hold my position like Dr. Presley did or have as much fun with the gavel as he did. I will do my best.
All right. We think you will. Yes, you will do absolutely stellar, Kathy. Okay, so now board appointments. And so I, what asks us, people, you know, if they don't want to do these positions, just please let me know. But for parliamentarian, I'd like Mr. Korblech to do that. For alternate parliamentarian, last term it was myself, I will do that as well. So I'm the alternate. KACCT rep, Kathy Ramsar was last year, would you do that for us this year? Since Bill Turley is not here, I'm going to have him be the alternate, KACCT rep. Foundations rep last year was Ms. Korblech. Would you care to do that again this year?
I would enjoy that very much, Gary.
Okay, thank you. Alternate foundations rep, I would ask Dr. Henricks if he would do so. Okay. RSVP rep, Dan, would you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. Governance committee, Kathy and Maya were on that last year. Would you care to serve again this year on that?
Sure.
And then I'm going to appoint Mr. Turley on that as well. Student services, I would like to ask Jim and Maya to serve there. Curriculum, Kathy and Dan were on there last year. Would you two care to stay with that?
That's fine.
Yes.
Finance, I will count these off. Finance committee, I would like to put Jim, Kelly, and Bill on that.
You bought me?
Okay. Title nine, I'd like to have Kelly and Maya do that. So I've kind of expanded this, and there's a couple of reasons why I am doing this. Is because of the need, but there's some of these that are going to fit very well in our strategic plan, and I'd like to be engaged with that strategic plan with Joe for these next few months, speed that process along. But basically making sure that we are monitoring, keeping pace, and we have measurables that we're keeping with that strategic plan. So with that, I'm going to create another new one, which is marketing and enrollment management, which will be charged with adhering and monitoring our progress with the strategic plan. Let's split it up. And I'd like for Jim and Kelly to be on that. Last but not least, the helicopter program, which we formed last year due to all the reasons why. I don't know if we need to refresh our memories on that. And when we created that, I would, I thought that a good fit for it would always be have this board's vice chair serve as chairman on it. Kathy, it would be you, you good? And then Jim, I'd like to have you serve there, and Dan, you as well. You were there last time, would you serve on this one as well?
Aye.
Okay. I know that's a long list, but I, I hope it all suits your interests, and so we'll continue with these. We've got seven now. So, like I said, I'm excited about this year. Okay. Administrative appointments. Where's the listing on that? We have Carla, dear secretary, you're going to be, there it is. Yes. Secretary of Board, Dr. Nolte. Deputy Secretary and Clerk, Carla. Treasurer for the Board, Dr. Forgy. And legal counsel, Mr. Booncur. Good? Okay. That is the new board and appointments and housekeeping. So do I have approval, a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Saying none. We have two executive sessions to go into. I'll let our council take us into executive session number one.
Fifteen minutes. All right, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss confidential student information pursuant to matters affecting a person as a student, which is, if discussed in an open meeting, might violate their right to privacy exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B. The open meeting to resume at this location at 7:36 PM. In addition to the trustees, Vice President Tamont and the College Attorney should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Still moved.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session.
Okay, we are now back in regular session, and no action was taken. We will need to go into one more executive session, so I'll turn it over to our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss concerns related to a current employee pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:55 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the human resources director, athletic director, Ripple, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session till 7:55. All right, we are now back in regular session, and there was no action taken. So with that, I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight, and our meeting is adjourned.